We're honored to be the beneficiary this year. And in conjunction, it is possible that we would be taking that over as an event and a fundraiser. It's going to be potentially a good fit for us. Main Street is all about making people fall in love with their community or want to visit your community. And the Christmas Parade is one of those things that make people love their community. I don't know what Woodland Park is without a Christmas Parade. It's always been here as long as I have. And when you stand on Highway 24 and those Christmas lights and those parade floats, surrounded by all your neighbors, you can't not help to have community pride and love this place. And it's a good fit for Main Street because people who have pride in their community want to make it better. They want it to be a successful place, and that's what Main Street's all about as well. So, I'm going to stop there because I could talk like this for hours. Anyways, we appreciate the time to present, and are there any questions?
Carol.
Great presentation, thank you both. On the signage committee, how are they working with the city and making sure you mesh with the city ordinance regarding signage?
I can see Sally grabbing the microphone already. She knows far more about it than I do.
That's really a great question. My mic is working, there it goes. In fact, the ad hoc committee that is set up, we will be meeting next Tuesday for our first meeting. And our goal is to inventory all the signs downtown, both the public and the private signs. But we are going to begin with the public signs, the directional parking signs, the wayfinding signs, and see if we can't improve that along with CDOT's help. And I've already spoken with CDOT. So, our current code, signage code, will be implemented and followed. And so, we are just looking at a better way of trying to message our pedestrians as well as our vehicles and drivers so that we encourage them to stop, shop, and enjoy the town.
Paul. I'd like to thank you girls. I'm sorry I missed the meeting. As your liaison, I should be much more attentive to this. But you guys have done such a great job. And I really see the city, the chamber, and volunteers and the board members coming together in such a way that it really is a good thing that I'm seeing. Thank you so much for all the hard work that you guys have been doing for this viewing and the audience. I deeply appreciate it.
Ladies, thanks very much. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, nice presentation. Excellent.
Okay, we will move on to... Laura, you're here for some reason. Oh, you're just kind of hanging around. Okay, I thought I was missing something. Agenda item 3B and appointments to, we'll start with Park and Rec Advisory Board, and Suzanne.
Thanks Mayor Levy. This evening, we actually have three boards and committees that will receive appointments. The first one is the Parks and Recreation Board that we call PRAB. And there's currently three open positions on this board. And the City Clerk's Office received one application so far for reappointment from incumbent Gene Metterick. Mertlick, excuse me. His application is attached, you've all seen a copy of it. I believe Gene is in the audience and available for any questions if council would like to ask any.
I don't see him either.
Oh, he's not in the audience?
So, Gene's not here. There you go.
Okay. I was told he was in the audience.
We've got one application for three openings, so he's in a pretty good spot. Council, if you're good with Mr. Mertlick, who has served for quite some time, take a motion to approve him and go from there.
Motion to approve Gene for Parks and Rec Advisory.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Leavy?
Yes.
Soynier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
The next committee mayor that we have is the Utilities Advisory Committee, known as UAC. And there are currently three vacancies and two alternate terms available on this committee. They were vacant as of May 31st. As of the date of publishing of the council packet and everything, the City Clerk's Office has received three applications from incumbents Rich McFay, Timothy Radigan, and Patricia Stinner. And I know for a fact that Tim McFay and Patricia Stinner are in the audience this evening.
I see that also.
Tim Radigan could not be with us this evening, but they are here for questions, and staff would ask that you approve all three to the UAC.
Tell me again, we have three for three.
Yes, we actually have two more alternate positions for others that are interested as well.
Council, any questions? We have a couple that have served for quite some time. I served on that board when I first became mayor, so five or six years ago, I got to work with Rick, and I know how passionate he is about water and does a great job. So, I appreciate you still being part of that process. And so, if we get a motion, council, to approve, we can do all three of them at once, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. There we go, Suzanne.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Soynier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And then, finally, we have the Board of Adjustment, known as BOA. And we have an opening for an alternate member, and Mr. Carol Trader is applying for that position. And we're excited about that because this is someone new to one of our boards and committees. Mr. Trader, I know is in the audience, if you'd like to ask him any questions this evening.
There he is. He's been here the last few meetings yelling at us, so we're glad to have you back. Any questions for Mr. Trader? One alternate position, we have one person applying, and so, you're in a pretty good spot. And we appreciate you willing to do that. Council, if we have a motion to approve, we'll move forward.
I'll move to approve Mr. Trader's appointment.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Soynier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you Suzanne, are you going to swear everyone in right now?
With your permission, I would like to do so.
Please do, please do. If all the new appointees...
Yeah, if we could have Mr. McFay, Ms. Stinner, and Mr. Trader up at the podium.
That's what I said, I'm beautiful.
I'm going to have to face me here, so I wanted to change my hands. Raise your right hand.
There's three great people right there.
All right, and please say your name.
I, Carol Trader.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
The Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
The city of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of whichever committee you're coming to.
To the committee I am appointed to.
To the BOA, UAC. UAC. I wish I was out tonight, Joe.
I wish I was out tonight.
Thank you, congratulations. Congratulations.
You're now a Marine. Huh? You hadn't taken that oath in a while, hadn't you?
A couple times.
Mr. Trader. Yep. It's Patricia's.
I just, I'm just going to sit up. For what? I'm just going to sit up.
When's for you to keep?
Four o'clock. Four o'clock. Or whatever. You don't need to recuse yourself. You've got no interest in her. It's ridiculous.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to thank again publicly Ms. Stinner and Mr. Trader and Mr. McFay for nothing more than caring about our community. I know you all give a lot of your time, but the important thing for me sitting in this seat is people that care about our community and three of the greatest examples that we could possibly have in front of us today. So, thank you again, and good luck, and thanks for all your hard work moving forward. It is very much appreciated, I promise. Okay, we will move on to, we have no additions, deletions, or corrections, consent calendar, Suzanne.
Thank you Mayor Levy. This evening, we have one item on tonight's consent calendar, and that's the approval of the minutes of the May 16th regular 2019 council meeting.
Council, questions, any corrections? If not, we'll just...
To approve the minutes on your agenda.
Thank you. And a second, Suzanne?
Thank you.
You okay? Coach, you okay?
Just trying to make sure my boss is okay. LeVar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Soynier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, sounds good. We will move on to public comment on items not on the agenda, and we're going to start with Paul Neal.
Your Honor, if I could briefly interject, just to make sure that we're protecting City Council, the city, and also the input of the citizens. I know that there is a project out there in the ether that's Village at Tamarack, I believe is what it's called. One of the things I wanted to make sure is to, in order to maintain the city council's potential that you might become an appeal body on that issue, to make sure that you're not providing or getting any testimony outside of what may come here in a couple weeks, and also for the public to make sure that they understand that if they need to appeal, they can do that. I believe that decision through staff is scheduled to come out on the 17th of this month. And so, wanted to make sure that the public was aware that there is an appeal process for the public. General public, it's found in 18.54.010 and 020 is the portion of the code that deals with that specifically. If the application is approved and the public wants to appeal that decision, and/or if the application is denied, 18.34.090, if the applicant would like to appeal that. So, any public comment regarding that issue, if you could hold off on that comment, tell the respective appropriate appeal process to make sure we're not ruining council's ability to be able to hear that appeal.
You understand that, Mr. Neal?
I do.
Okay, good. Also understand, the planning director has made no decision up to this point. And so, I don't want conversation of the cart before the horse, if you will. There will be a time and a place. And so, you're free to take a couple minutes and express your thoughts, keeping in mind what I just said and what our city attorney just said. Because if you know me and this council, we want every bit of input we can get from our community, especially where these kinds of very passionate and important issues. But we want to do it right, and I know Mr. Watson wants to speak afterwards, and honestly, this council doesn't want to hear the same thing the second time around. So, use your time wisely, and remember that we will have our next meeting, I believe the 26th, is that correct? 26th of June. Before we move forward, go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. City Attorney, your advice for us is to what? Go do this, or?
Well, we're not going to let them talk in that regard.
Yeah, if the comments today are about the Tamarack project, then it would be appropriate for council to stop that comment and have the person reserve those comments for when it's appropriate, at the appropriate appeal process. So that way, you're not affecting a decision that has yet to be made.
Of course, we don't control...
Nope. But, Mr. Jase, I'm just going to ask you to help me, if we get off course, to stop. Okay, Carol?
And along those lines, correspondence to council members via email, how should we handle those?
If you could forward them to staff so that we can make sure they're a part of the appropriate packet. As I said, as these issues become ripe at the appropriate stages, is when we provide the appropriate information. That ensures that council's not in a position where you're affecting someone's property rights and have already made your mind up. That's where we get into trouble.
And in that regard, I have chosen not to respond to those emails for that very reason.
And that's helpful for the public to understand.
I've chose not to even read them.
Well, and I've received emails and written correspondence, which I forwarded on to the city clerk for her to make part of the record for the appropriate time for consideration. Not that I don't want to read them or don't want to see them, but I just know that I don't want to jeopardize our ability to sit as a review board. So, those have been sent forward to the clerk so that we can consider those at the appropriate time. So, I have not responded either.
Yeah, and for the record, I have submitted two letters, the one that I've addressed to each and every one, which I submitted appropriately for the June 26th council meeting. Excuse me. What my topic is today, I think is appropriate, given where we are in the process. And I would hope that you would at least listen to what I say, and then, Mr. Myers, if I start going in the wrong direction, please guide me.
That sounds good. Do me a favor, start with your name and address, and then I'll give you a couple minutes.
Very good, thank you, sir. Well, my name is Paul Neal, I go by Rusty, my wife is Dawn, and in the interest of time, I think I can read faster than I can try to just off the top of my head, because I'd like to do a very organized, and that allows Mr. Mayor to stop me if I'm in the wrong place, okay?
Thank you.
I, Paul B. Neal III, and my wife, Dawn C. Chappell Neal, hereafter referred to as "we" and "our," the undersigned citizens and residents of Woodland Park, Colorado, object to the approval process. Process. Not that I don't want to read them or don't want to see them, but I just know that I don't want to jeopardize our ability to sit as a review board. So those have been sent forward to the clerk so that we can consider those at the appropriate time. So I have not responded either.
Yeah, and for the record, I have submitted two letters, the one that I've addressed to each and every one, which I submitted appropriately for the June 26th council meeting, excuse me. What my topic is today, I think is appropriate, given where we are in the process, and I would hope that you would at least listen to what I say, and then, Mr. Myers, if I start going in the wrong direction, please guide me.
That sounds good. Do me a favor, start with your name and address, and then I'll give you a couple of minutes.
Very good, thank you, sir. Well, my name is Paul Neal, I go by Rusty, my wife is Dawn, and in the interest of time, I think I can read faster than I can try to just off the top of my head, because I'd like to do a very organized, and that allows Mr. Mayor to stop me if I'm in the wrong place, okay?
Thank you.
I, Paul B. Neal III, and my wife, Dawn C. Chappell Neal, hereafter referred to as "we" and "our," the undersigned citizens and residents of Woodland Park, Colorado, object to the approval process. Process, not the proposed project, the process, being raised used for the project known as the Village of Tammerack, hereafter referred to as the project, in the City of Woodland Park, county of Teller, State of Colorado. Objection to the approval process. It is our understanding that the Director, Planning and Zoning Department, in consultation with the city attorney, are of the opinion that the project is a permitted use, and therefore should follow Title 18, Chapter 34, Section 050, Procedure for Administrative Review. We disagree and feel that the project does not meet the intent of the Municipal Zoning Code, and therefore should follow Title 18, Chapter 34, Section 058, Procedure for Public Hearing Process. The U.S. legal system is heavily based on European law, especially the legal system of Great Britain, England. We believe that the great majority of legal cases that have been heard and decided in the United States, when there is a discrepancy or inconsistency between parts of a legal document, that the courts have traditionally used a very old rule, which remains good law, and that is to look at the contract as a whole, to understand its overall commercial purpose, as stated by Lord Housby in Glynn B. Margiston way back in 1893, and the laws and guide is still being followed today in most courts. Looking at the whole of the instrument and seeing what one must regard as its main purpose, one must reject words, indeed whole provisions, if they are inconsistent with what one assumes to be the main purpose of the contract. It is a serious error to interpret contract clauses in isolation. The context of the whole contract agreement between the parties is key. Only a full understanding of the whole agreement will provide clarity as to the party's intentions when they entered into the contract. And the contract I'm talking about, it's municipal zoning codes. And I do provide the reference on where I got that citation. The Director of the Planning and Zoning Department is relying on a single table entry from Title 18, Chapter 9, Section 090, Table of Permitted Uses for Business, Industrial, and Residential Districts, Row N, Residential Dwelling Units, Sub Row 1, Single Family is permitted in Multi-Family Residential Suburban District. A single-family structure is detached. I hope Mr. Myers and I would agree on that, since you gave me that legal opinion. This single entry must be weighed against the document as a whole. Title 18, Chapter 9 establishes the districts in the City of Woodland Park. Paragraph 18.09.010 provides the description of a multi-family residential suburban, MFS. It states, MFS, Multi-Family Residential with Attached Units Having a Density Level from 2 to 8 dwellings units per acre. And a multi-family residential urban, MFU, it states, Multi-Family Residential with Attached Units Having a Density Level from 9 to 20 dwelling units per acre. The latter clauses of each description are to explain the differences between suburban and urban, while the first clause of both sentences, Multi-Family Residential with Attached Units, is to establish what the MF is to mean. Furthermore, Title 18, Chapters 14 and 15, repeat and amplify the purpose of these districts. In both sections, Sub Paragraph .005, the purpose paragraphs, the language is specific and consistent. This land use designation is intended to accommodate attached residential dwelling units. We believe the intent when the code was written was for these districts to accommodate duplexes, townhomes, apartments, and condominiums. If the Director, Planning and Zoning, and the city attorney had applied the looking at the whole document rule, it would not be difficult to compare the project site plan with its submitted business model to see that a more appropriate district designation for the project would be the Mobile Home Park, MHP, per 1818.005. Housing in this designated land use categories is intended to facilitate manufactured housing, opportunities located exclusively in motorhome parks.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that the Speaker has crossed the line in terms of an argument for or against the project, not against the process.
Thank you. Jase?
Certainly, I agree, but I think the overall, if we could characterize what you're saying is you believe that the chart that require, or that allows, single-family homes in the multi-family district is an error.
It is inconsistent.
Correct.
With the rest of the document, and we're asking you to reconsider which process is followed. We're not challenging the project at this time. We want to challenge that you're using the wrong process, which bypasses a public hearing. We're seeking a public hearing, which is granted when you follow the 1834.058.
But we are not in a public hearing at this point.
Right, and so to the point that this would affect that decision, I guess I would refer you to the statute, or the code that I stated earlier, if you'd like to appeal the decision of the Planning Department to utilize that section of the code, there is that appeal process. To the point that, for council's benefit, that there may or may not be an inconsistency in the code, we can certainly address that as staff. Some later date is certainly not on the agenda today for discussion, but I think that's your point, is that there may be an inconsistency.
Yeah, that there's an inconsistency, and I'm asking that the council look at that.
You feel like you've made your point, Mr. Neal?
I do.
Okay. And others do too. Do us a favor, if you'll send us a copy of that, send it to the city manager or the city clerk, and so that she can distribute it, maybe if you have an electronic copy, just so in the meantime, council have an opportunity to look at that also.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Carol. John Watson, I'm sorry, what, Ms. Noel?
Since we're on that subject of appeals, what is the process for them?
We'll talk about that at the right time.
So, I've referenced the code, but I'm not in a position to give advice to the public on how to interpret the code, so it is clear in there what that process requires.
Mr. Watson, if you give us your name and address to start, please.
John Watson, it's 1423 Masters Drive, Woodland Park. I'll respect what you said, I was going to read my objections that I sent to Sally Radley, I'll respect that, not do that, and just make a very simple comment. The zoning is very confusing, and I think, I don't know the process for changing zoning or implementing zoning rules, but I think that the city needs to address it. We need to have some type of a zoning that addresses these homes, these tiny homes, these small manufactured homes. This is not the first time it's come up, it will come up again, and I think the only way that it can be addressed is to clarify the zoning, and whatever process that that is, that happens, or that will make that happen, needs to happen after this is all settled. But I will refrain from, I did give every one of you copies of my objections that I sent to Ms. Radley. Okay?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your input. Okay, we are going to move on. We have no unfinished business tonight, I'm sorry, I'll go back. Anybody else in the audience like to make comment on anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay, if not, we'll move forward. We have no unfinished business and no ordinances on initial posting, so we'll move on to public hearings, and now she's ready to go. Laura Pellegrino. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Val.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm going to talk to the council about this. I'm on the Board of UTRAIL Stampede Rodeo, the applicant in this case. I'm the treasurer and help with sponsorships and some other things, and I normally, as a point of order, I would normally recuse myself, because I believe whether it's an impactful public hearing or not, trivial or not, that we need to all pay attention to when we have associations. So, I would ask that the advice of the rest of the council for, if they want me to recuse myself, I'm happy to do that, I would recuse myself and stay up here if that would be all right with you, because I have, I want to see the presentation by some of the people, but I would defer to the council for their...
Well, let's start with the city attorney. What's the metrics, what are the requisites for recusing yourself?
So, the legal standard is if you or immediate family member have a pecuniary interest, either gain or loss in the particular issue at hand. So in this case, council member Carr doesn't have money attached to this that we're, that I'm aware of, correct?
Just headaches.
Just as a volunteer for the organization, but he's not paid, so there's not a legal conflict, but certainly wanted, if there's a potential appearance that council's uncomfortable with, to have that as a discussion point. But there is no legal conflict of interest.
Counsel, everyone good with that?
I'm fine.
He's a good guy. You gal put on a great show, you should see it, Val.
Okay, Laura, Mary Jo, you're going to start?
Yes, I'd like to start if I could. I'm here for the, I'm Mary Jo Larson, 200 West Midland Avenue. I'm here for the 63rd UTRAIL Stampede Rodeo. This is something I think is very important for our community, because it's our tradition. We've had rodeo and major rodeo in Woodland Park since the early 1900s, and we'd like to, before we completely lose it, at least hang on to one time a year where we can have our heritage revisited. I would like to thank the council for the generous donation for our rodeo this year, we do so appreciate that. And I would like to introduce our rodeo queen. This is Sydney Nielsen, she's our rodeo queen and one of the top hands. This is Ginger Patrick, and Ginger Patrick is our top hand, she has a drill team, she's part of our rodeo, she's part of our future of the equestrian still left in Woodland Park. And I'd like to let Sydney, we'll make this fast, I'd like to let Sydney tell you about the rodeo and make her presentation, and then we'll get to camping.
Yeah, Mary Jo, I'm sorry, it's just not the time. We need to approve this now. This is what's on the agenda. If she would like to come back and speak afterwards, then that's fine. I don't, how many years, I mean...
Can we still get them on the, for tonight after we're done, that they can speak?
Absolutely.
Because, okay, if you could do that, please, because I'd like to hear you, hear them, I think it's a good thing.
We'll do.
We're requesting our camping permit. This is a camping permit like we did last year, it's not public camping, this is for our cowboys and our stock contractors to stay with the animals.
How many years have, how many years have we done that across the street, Mary Jo? Or, I'm sorry, across the street?
Well, we have, this is our fourth rodeo over there, so it's our fourth one there, we did them all in town before.
Okay, young lady, you know, I'll go ahead and take a minute or so now, and we'll give you that time, and we'll go from there.
Hi, my name is Sydney Nielsen, I'm the 2019 UTRAIL Stampede Rodeo Queen, and I'm here...
This is not the right time.
Okay, sorry. 12660 to Hosa Lane. I'm here to invite you to the Stampede Rodeo, which is right here in Woodland Park, June 28th through the 30th, and it's located on Highway 24 at the east end of town. And we kick it off on Friday, June 28th, with the Jack Paul Bull Riding, and gates open at 6:00, and the rodeo starts at 7:00. Saturday, June 29th, and Sunday, June 30th, we have, the gates open at 12:00, and the show starts at 2:00. We watch cowboys and cowgirls compete in team roping, bronc riding, tie-on roping, steer wrestling, bull riding, and barrel racing, and as they battle it out for cash and prizes. And don't forget everybody's favorite, mutton busting. And we have our local top hands rodeo team, which is sure to delight you with their precision riding skills. When the gates open, you can enjoy shopping, delicious food and drinks, plus lots of fun, so bring your whole family down to see the festivities. Be in your seat at 2:00, so you don't miss a minute of the action. Tickets are free for kids 12 and under, $5 for kids 6 to 12, $10 for those 13 and over, and we offer a discount for military, first responders, and advanced purchase of three-day passes. Parking is free, but limited, so make sure you get there early, and if you want any more information, you can visit www.utralstampedrodeo.com. Thank you for your time, and I'll see you at the rodeo, June 28th through the 30th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me speak.
Sure.
We do appreciate that. Have you got a minute for Ginger?
We do.
Ginger Patrick, 303 Chauvinville Circle, Florissant Heights, but Teller County. I just moved here in November, I'm 20-something years Air Force, grew up in Spokane, so mountain girl. This rodeo scenario that's here, I heard about when we lived in Ohio for 20 years. Colorado's notorious for its cowboys and its history, and what is the building in town that has the painting of Mary Jo and the rodeo queens and the Indians?
The Cultural Center.
Right, that's a big partier town. When the two ladies were up here earlier, Lynn Jones and Stephanie Alfieri, and they were talking about events, bring people here, rodeo is an event, this is Colorado. And then when she talked about Main Street, I leaned over and asked Mary Jo, how old is that Calhoun Building? Because as a newcomer, that's the first thing I saw, and the first thing I looked for every time I come through this town is that Calhoun Building. That was built in 1891. It's been in business as the Calhoun for 54 years, since 1965. So in that Main Street USA campaign that you're doing, Calhoun, even if it's just all about that horse up there that needs a new paint job. That's a sweet building. This is the West, you know, I, this rodeo team that I'm performing with here at the UTRAIL Stampede, I led it for 19 years in Ohio, and from Ohio, the top hands did the Reno rodeo, we won the national drill competition in Texas, we performed in Nova Scotia, as in drive-through Maine and keep-going, and up into Canada. So this new team that's coming here, the Pike's Peak Rangerettes been here, and they can stay, but the top hands are in town now. This rodeo should be a really good draw. Mary Jo says it's the 63rd year, and with little research, that's not hard to find out. When I look at the local newspapers, like the UTRAIL Courier News, and there's some award of some kind going on in this town, I don't care if it's the Chamber of Commerce or Arby's, they are wearing cowboy hats. This is cowboy country. You cannot let that rodeo go. You've got to help it, or at least you've got to allow it to get itself in there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Laura, go ahead, Jase.
So I guess now that we're at a public comment, or a public hearing portion, I don't know if you want to start with your script to start us off.
Well, we're good. I'll go to Laura, and if you wanted to add, we'll go, let you start.
Yes, Mayor Levy, so this is for the best small-town rodeo in the country, and it is for their camping permit, so it is only related to camping tonight. We are here pursuant to Municipal Code Section 812, which is council's ability to allow camping in designated areas. And again, this is for camping on the Woodland Park Saddle Club site, and here's a map showing you the site as it currently exists, and the camping is proposed for this northern portion. So, again, it's the 63rd UTRAIL Stampede Rodeo, that's the special event. Overnight camping is limited to security vendors and event participants, as shown on this map, on that area, and staff does recommend approval. We have had camping on this site in past years, the last four years, for the Gem and Jewelry Show and for other events as well, and we have had no incidents. Notice of this public hearing was sent by mail to adjacent property owners, was published in the Pike's Peak Courier, and has been posted on site. Staff has received no written comments regarding this request, and does recommend approval, subject to conditions. And I'll just summarize the conditions briefly. Condition number one, camping is permitted at 19250 US Highway 24 from June 25th through July 2nd, in those areas designated on the site plan. Number two, access to the city lift station, located at the entrance to the ground, shall remain unobstructed at all times. Number three, camping shall be reserved for security vendors and event participants. Number four, camping units shall be self-contained and may include camper trailers, horse trailers... Number four, camping units shall be self-contained and may include camper trailers, horse trailers, recreational camping vehicles, and pickup campers. Number five, all water, wastewater from camping must be collected. No disposal of wastewater and gray water is allowed at this site, and no connection to city water is available. Number six, on- and off-site trash, garbage, debris shall be cleaned up upon completion of the camping and shall be coordinated with and enforced by the property owner. Number seven, the applicant and/or property owner shall be responsive to complaints received, if any. All lighting, uh, number seven... Number eight, all lighting within the camping area shall be downcast shielded and turned off by 9:00 PM. Number nine, generators, if any, shall be turned off by 9:00 PM. Number 10, campers and event participants shall be subject to Municipal Code standards in 9.41, which relates to noise. And finally, the last one, number 11, for fire mitigation, all grass areas shall be mowed. This site shall be watered, and water trucks shall be onsite at all times during camping. Thank you, Mayor Levy. I think that's my presentation.
Thanks very much, counsel. Questions for the presenter or, or the applicant? Oh, like you said, four years, um, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm right across the street. We've never had a single issue, and, I mean, obviously brings a lot of people to town in a great event, so I'm in complete favor. Counsel, anybody, before we go to the public? Okay, this will be your opportunity. Um, we are in public comment. Anybody like to come and speak at this point? Okay, if not, this public hearing's closed, and if I can get a motion to approve, we'll get this passed. Motion to approve. Okay? And a second. Suzanne?
Levy?
Yes.
Swinier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yeah.
Peace?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Mary Jo, everybody, thank you very much. Congratulations. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We'll look forward to that. Tell us again, it's going to be the 25th through the 2nd, correct? Okay, go ahead, Val.
June 28th through 30th, uh, Friday night, through several events. Uh, gates open at 6:00. Gates open at noon on Saturday and Sunday. Then shop and then watch the rodeo on the weekend to peak.
Sounds good. Okay, well, we have no new business tonight, so we'll move on to reports. Um, just got a couple of events to announce. Every Friday, Woodland Farmers Market in Memorial Park, 8 o'clock tomorrow, and it'll go through, almost through Labor Day? No. Next Friday. Okay, next Friday. Friday, June 7th, 6 to 8, Woodland Park Music Series Jazz in June is at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. Um, the following day, Saturday, June 8th, is coming Saturday, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, Annual Citywide Cleanup at the Ute Pass Cultural Center from 8:45 to 3 o'clock. Last year, I know we had over 100. We had a number of people helping that, so it's supposed to be a nice day Saturday. We'll get a lot done, and, um, congratulations to the people that lead that. Saturday also, June 8th, 4 o'clock, Splash into Summer Celebration at the Woodland Aquatic Center. Uh, there'll be discount passes, games, contests, and special drawings. Um, that'll be a good place to go after you clean up the city. Um, also Saturday, June 8th, from 7:00 to 10:00, the Woodland Music Series College Summer Festival at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. And then, um, a week from Tuesday, the 18th of June, from 5:30 to 7:00, the next Chamber of Business After Hours is at Foxworth Galbraith. That's June 18th. That's all I have, Val.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a couple things tonight. Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, uh, which I'm on the liaison, produced a very nice newsletter. It was in your packet. Uh, it's online in the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, uh, website. There's some, there's a really valuable thing in there that I learned, that you can't just recycle everything. And, uh, Suzie Branham, uh, and Laura Pellegrino worked on putting this together, uh, to affect the, uh, there's some very interesting things that my wife and I, when we originally came from California, were recycling everything, and apparently that's not the right thing to do. But this has a whole bunch of really interesting information about keeping Woodland Park Beautiful and some of the, the youth people, uh, members of our communities that are working there. And I also want to mention that we have openings in Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. We have at least one, with the possibility of more, depending on, um, the outcome of the Board of the Committee determining absenteeism. Uh, so, Woodland Park Beautiful, uh, covered that. This, the rodeo I'm talking about, we, I briefly mentioned that. Uh, it's a huge community event, brings thousands of people in here. Uh, hopefully, they shop and do more than just the rodeo. We found that they do, uh, which means Mary Jo can't be at the rodeo, um, leading the effort, but, uh, sitting in the Cowhand. Uh, on a personal note, I want to, I want to mention, um, my appreciation to the city staff for their pothole maintenance and things like that. And you might be interested, why would I bring that up? Well, I spent a, last month, I was a month in South America. And I was on their best roads for a month, uh, hanging onto my hat and trying to see if I, my tailbone was broken every day. So, their regular roads are potholes. And I'm talking about four-wheel drive, stuff we would drive, our four-wheel drives in. They drive Toyotas and Subarus and everything, and they're airborne all the time. Um, so, I'm never again personally ever going to complain about a pothole, uh, having lived through that. Uh, and I want to congratulate our streets crew, which doesn't get enough credit for it, because none of us, we, we all don't go to South America and find out what real potholes are. But, uh, you know, I appreciate Kip and Ben and your whole group.
Kelly?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report on the meeting of the DDA on Tuesday, which is our regular scheduled meeting this month. Um, the board decided, um, to purchase a stagecoach that, uh, was found by one of the members of our Board of Directors that will be placed in the Woodlands rest stop area into the, in the district area, um, behind the rest stop, Bergstrom Park. Thank you, Kelly, for remembering. And, um, so I wanted to report that I think they secured that today, and that will be placed over there as a piece of art for our community. Um, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol? Hillary? Paul?
Thank you. I am humbled today, for 75 years ago, P-Day, getting into the invasion of Europe. And I want to thank everybody, present, past. Thank you for your service, and thank you for this freedom that I have. Something to remember, so this freedom will be with us. And the United States stepped up along with our allies in the job. It was a great sacrifice. I also want to thank, uh, you very, very, uh, good job, Mary Jo, and you have, uh, Charles, and, uh, I hope to, uh, make sure...
Laura?
Uh, I'd like to report that the dog park opening was a success. Uh, Kelly was there. A few other members were there. It was, it was phenomenal. I think the count was maybe 150 to 200 people there.
How many dogs?
A lot. Uh, a lot of big dogs. Lot of dogs. Big, big dogs. Um, a lot of vendors there. Really was a surprise when I pulled up, uh, showed community support. Uh, the dog park is very well-done. I was impressed. Uh, I hadn't gone over there, so, uh, if anybody hasn't had a chance to go over there and take their dog, please go over there. You will be impressed. The other thing, I feel like this dog park is a trial run for our community to see how well it's taken care of and it cleaned up, and if it does work out, we can put another dog park maybe closer to the middle of town, instead of so far on the outskirts. So, congratulations to Bianca and everybody that was a part of that, because I truly feel if there's a will, there's a way, and she proves that. Uh, the other thing is, uh, just to highlight on Kelly at the DDA meeting, the stagecoach is mostly going to be paid by donations. So, hopefully, they don't have to take anything out of their budget. Maybe to pay for it initially, but then donations will pay for it in the long run. So, that's great for the DDA. Congratulations. The other thing, uh, we have strategic planning coming up on the 10th, and I was hoping Suzanne was gonna just cover that, or just maybe elaborate on that, make sure the public's aware of it. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Kelly, you have some more?
I just want to follow up on the dog park...
Yeah.
...ribbon cutting as well. Hillary was there as well with, with little Marley, Suzanne's former little dog. And, um, I just have to say that she did a great job as well. And, um, I just wanted to point out, there were lots of concerns initially when we were talking about the dog park and the original site over behind Safeway. I have to report that out of the many dogs that were there, there was no barking at the dog park. Those dogs at the dog park are entirely too busy to be barking. There was one dog in the little dog park, and she went around and told every other little dog in the little dog area that she was in charge, and that was the only barking that happened. So, I just want to tell everyone that at these dog parks, barking is not an issue. Barking's an issue when dogs are locked up behind a gate, and there's other dogs out free walking by. And at the dog park, there was no dark barking at the dog park all day, except the one little dog, because she was in charge. That's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Hey, you gave me a dog to bark all the time.
I did, didn't I? You need to take her to the dog park, she'll quit that. I'll have a talk with her.
All right, we'll move on to the city attorney. And city manager, Darren?
All right. All right. Okay, so a couple, uh, updates, uh, just to respond to, uh, council member, um, Sawyer, is that the city council strategic planning, uh, process will be, will occur, the second portion of that will occur on Monday, June 10th, um, between 4:30 and 8:30 in city council chambers. Uh, we'll be here prepared to do that. A reminder to city council that we, that our next meeting, our next city council meeting was moved from the 27th to the 6/26 on Wednesday. Um, it's not a Thursday, it'll be on Wednesday this time. Couple other things that we'd like to talk about before I hand over to, uh, to Suzanne. Uh, we're going to be hosting Dr. John Mueller, Muller, from Fort Meade, Maryland. Uh, he is the deputy garrison commander, is part of the US Army Installation Command Fellowship here between June 24th and June 28th. Um, it really is an idea exchange between garrison commanders, military garrison commanders, in cities to get, uh, an exchange of ideas, um, and will be one of probably 12 communities in the nation that will be hosting, um, uh, garrison commanders, uh, for this fellowship this year. And it's, it's sponsored and paid for through, um, the International City County Management Association. So, it's a good time. We'll try to encourage him to go to the rodeo, uh, while he's here. Um, and there's a lot of other things that he'll be participating in, including an exchange with staff, um, and also a tour of NORAD, so I appreciate that, um, from the assistance from...
Our emphasis when, uh, he visits us at NORAD and NorthCom is, uh, how NorthCom supports civil authorities and also wildlife, or wildfire fighting, uh, between DoD and civil authorities.
Uh, thank you, appreciate it. Um, last thing I'll touch on is, uh, I put a, gave you the, if you hadn't received the, the update, the monthly report, one of the things I want to do on a pretty regular basis from now on, after our discussion, our last strategic planning process, is provide an update on the budget priorities that city council approved last year into this year. So, you have that in front of you. Um, you'll see, um, the current status, and this will be published each month in our reports. Staff will update it where we're at. We're pretty close to completing the majority of the, of the priorities. We have a few, few outstanding, but those, most of those are either in procurement phase or the implementation phase. So, uh, if you have any questions related to these, please contact me and let me know. Otherwise, I think this, I hope this will, um, communicate where we're at, um, with your priorities and, and the community, and, um, we'll continue to do this if this satisfies those requirements. Um, I got it, I'm good. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to you? For the, okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Suzanne.
Before Suzanne, just quickly, uh, Darren, I want to thank you and the staff for this, because this is a great tool for council, keeps us up to date, and really, uh, you know, is a great communication tool. So, I know we all appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and I know there's some other financial reports that city council's expecting, and we intend to, with the transition, the new finance director will be getting those at the end of, end of this month, the 6/26 meeting, so.
That's good. Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, we have 23 minutes still.
We've got an executive session.
No, I know, but I told them we would end before 8:30, so. The first thing I want to, just to remind council and thank council for participating in the doodle poll that was sent out to you yesterday. And, um, we have a tentative date. It looks like it's probably going to be a go. We've spoken to, um, the expert speaker that will be having come for our dear work session, and that'll be on June 25th from 4:00 to 5:30 PM in the council chambers. And of course, you will get reminders regarding that. That'll be posted so that all the public knows. Just wanted to do that reminder. As council will recall...
Oh, I'm good.
As council will recall, on August 2nd of 2018, city council adopted council procedures and policies. And as when we adopted these policies and procedures, we knew this was going to be a living document, that it would be needing to be updated, changed as needs come about. I have two, um, changes I would like to make to this document this evening, and then I have a whole bunch of changes that I would like to make, but I'd like to give those to you in a memo and an email after, um, the city attorney has been reviewing the council and procedures. But tonight, I'd like to ask council's permission, this has been brought to me by council members, to add, um, two things to the document immediately. The first being that when we have a long council meeting, if we can take at 9 o'clock, if we can take a two-hour, two, excuse me, I have the two-hour break. If we can take at 9 o'clock after two hours, if we can take a 10-minute break for the council to get up, move about, and stretch your, stretch their legs. So, I'd like to be able to put that in the council policy and procedures, if I have, um, council consensus, that's one. And the second one is, um, we would like to, um, whenever the council has a work session like we did this evening, in the future, we would like to make sure the work sessions end by 6:45 PM, so we can just gather our papers, gather our thoughts, get a drink, and come downstairs. So, we're just asking for a 15-minute break between, um, work session and council meetings. Those are the two I'm asking for, um, consensus of approval tonight, and other ones I'll be bringing forth to you in a memo.
Everyone good with those, counsel?
I don't know why they need to be in the procedures. Just common sense.
Just do them.
Just do them, yes.
Sir?
Sir, thank you. Um, Suzanne and I have been communicating about trying to keep, we keep track of all the notes we've made over time for the past year or so, about other procedures. I assume we'll take another pass at those, is what you're talking about.
Exactly.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, okay.
Good, thanks, Suzanne.
Suzanne, I, I have no problem with those being added to the procedures, but I, I think it's unnecessary.
It was a request made by council.
Okay? I got it.
And, you know, like you say, Carol, if it's 9 o'clock, we got two things to do, and it's going to take 10 minutes, we probably don't have to do it. So, just to which you said, it'd be all common sense driven.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. Why, why make a, well, we can force them?
Right. Okay.
Whatever works.
Anything else?
I think I can, I guess, we just have a motion that...
I won't be making, but, uh, counsel, I need a motion, please, to go into executive session.
I'll move that we go into executive session.
Sure. Thank you, Suzanne.
And would you, um, just the topic of what the motion, it's on your agenda there as to why we're going into executive session?
I will.
Thank you.
Um, executive session will be held upstairs pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, Sub-B, Sub, Sub-4, Sub-B, excuse me, for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding pending litigation.
Thank you. Thank you. Swenier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yeah.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all for being here tonight, and counsel, we're gonna try to start right away upstairs at 8:15.